All rise, hear ye, hear ye. Hammond County Commission Meeting is now in session. The Honorable Chris Cutshaw presiding, and please remain standing.
Thank you, Harley. Thank everyone for being here to our Hammond County Legislative Body regular scheduled meeting this March 21st, 2024. As we get started tonight, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ahern, if she would lead us in prayer, please.
Our scripture this evening is from Matthew, Chapter 28, verse 6. He is not here; he is risen, just as he said. Let's bow, please. Dear heavenly Father, we're just so thankful for that you have risen during this season. The Easter season, Lord, that we can celebrate the risen Lord. Jesus, we thank you for all you've done for us. We thank you for having us together this evening to take care of our community, Lord. We love you, and in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) Pledge. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated.
Turn on your microphone. Any of you may want to talk to him?
Probably don't.
What's that little DLR?
I don't know. Don't worry about my back.
You can call the roll, please. While the clerks call the roll, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance, again, thank you for being here. We do have rules in print for our public comment guidelines at the rear of the room if you need those, and also that this body does operate under Robert's Rules of Order in most part unless our local rules supersede.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. We are open for business, and we will get started tonight. I would like to take personal privilege here and call on our Executive Director of the HCXL, Darrell Brady, to the well, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also thanks to each one of you for your service to our community. Tonight, I come to represent and present a proclamation from State Senator Steve Sutherland to Stan Harville, one of your colleagues, for his retirement from the foundation of HCXL. With me tonight, I've brought some people representing our Board of Directors, our Board Chair, Amy Stieslinger, Tim Cooley from our Board of Directors, and also Mr. Chris Cates, who is a member of our Advisory Board for Youth Leadership, Hammond County. Mr. Chairman, if you would, just allow me to just say just a couple of words, and then we'll present this.
Absolutely.
Again, this is a proclamation from State Senator Steve Sutherland, who sends his regrets that he could not be here tonight. And in addition, signing on to this is Representative Rick Eldridge and Representative Jeremy Faison, and of course, Governor Bill Lee. I think for those of you who have not worked with Stan for very long, or those of you who have, I think many of you know that he had a distinguished career as an educator in the Hammond County school system for over 39 years. He also then went to HCXL, which is the education foundation in our community that provides financial support for things such as junior achievement, so that every fifth grader can attend Biz Town, Future Ready Expo for every eighth grader in five counties. And of course, he's been served as a volunteer with Youth Leadership, Hammond County. So I do want to recognize, too, that one of the things that this proclamation says that he is a native of Marstown and a graduate of Marstown East High School, and attended Walter State Community College where he played baseball, and then graduated from the University of Tennessee, and then ETSU with a master's degree in education. But he has been a 21st century classroom teacher at Marstown East, he's been a principal at Witt Elementary School, and he's been an administrator as well. So on behalf of our Board of Directors, and on behalf of State Senator Steve Sutherland, we'd like to present this tonight, but before I do, I'd also like to recognize our Board Chair, Ms. Stieslinger, and Mr. Cooley, and Mr. Cates.
(Inaudible).
I want to echo what Darrell said. Thank you, Stan, so much for your years of service in education in Hammond County. We have all been very lucky to know you, and I know that there's a lot of lucky students out there, too, that have had you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stan. You have a servant's heart, and you will never, ever know all of the lives that you've impacted over the years. So I hope that warms your heart, the things that you have done for the youth in this county and across East Tennessee. So just thank you very much, and I'm proud to know you.
Thank you, Tim. On behalf of Youth Leadership, we just want to say thank you. You continue to pour into student lives. The best investment anybody can make is helping a student reach something they think they can't do on their own. So thank you for that. Thank you for your time in the classroom, everything you've done behind the doors to make Hammond County better. So thank you, sir. It's a privilege to serve with you.
Thank you, Chris.
Mr. Brady, you're invited into the well if you'd like to present.
(Inaudible).
And bring your colleagues with you.
(Inaudible).
You should warn me about this.
(Laughter).
Hey, Stan, you're getting an award.
Yeah, you're getting an award today.
(Inaudible).
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 Commissioner Walker. (Inaudible).
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome, Mr. Brady.
Yeah.
You're all welcome to stick around.
(Inaudible).
I understand.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Hear, hear.
We'll move now to Item 2 on our regular calendar, Public Comments Regarding General and Non-Agenda Items. There is no one that has signed up. If there's anyone in our audience that would like to participate, you may approach. You have three minutes to do so. Seeing none, we will now move to Item 2B, Public Comments Regarding Agenda Items. If there is anyone in our audience that would like to address this commission, you may do so at this time. All right, we will now move to Item 3, Nominations and Appointments. Today, we have the appointment of the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeal. From Property Assessor Keith Ely, I am requesting an appointment of the following Hammond County citizens for a two-year term on the Hammond County Board of Equalization. He has discussed this appointment with each individual. They are Dean Hammer, Bill Hicks, Earl Cameron, and Danny Young. Is there a motion that we accept these names?
So moved.
Commissioner Long has motioned, and Commissioner Horner has seconded that motion. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote this motion off the board, please.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
This motion does carry. Thank you. Item 4, Counter Rules Committee Report. Call on Vice Chair Horner tonight. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 4A, Approval of Consent Calendar Items, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We do have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on the consent calendar items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. This motion does carry. Item 4B, or go ahead, Tim.
Item 4B, Approval of Regular Calendar Items, and I do have an add-on.
Have an amendment? Yes.
Amendment to Use of Interest Income from Landfill Bond Proceeds.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Before you...
What was that? We can't hear. I can't hear.
It is the add to the Finance Committee. Under Finance Committee, it will be Item C3, and it is Use of Interest Income from Landfill Bond Proceeds. Mayor Britton, would you like to address, or would you want a motion in a second? Let's do that. Let's take a... Commissioner Horner has motioned that we add this as an amendment to our regular calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, discussion. Mayor, would you?
(Inaudible) in your... On your agenda are two resolutions dealing with the additional financing for the landfill expansion, following the receipt of bids for the expansion. The resolutions call for borrowing $6.5 million additional dollars that the county would issue bonds for to cover the cost of the expansion based on the low bid for the project. Now, last Friday at the Solid Waste Board meeting, there was some concern expressed by some of the board members that the $15.5 million that are being financed would not be enough, that there might be some overruns for the project. So I did some research on whether or not to increase the issuance of more debt, or how overruns would be covered, and there are... We've had bonds for about a year for the landfill expansion, and we've earned about $215,000 on those. And the city of Marstown issued their $4.5 million over a year and a half ago, and they have about $270,000 in interest. And so what I'm proposing, and what I have proposed to the city, is that the County Commission and City Council designate those interest earnings to the landfill project to cover any overages, if there are some. There's a $400,000 contingency in the contract, in the $5.5 million contract, there's a $400,000 contingency there. This $0.5 million of interest income would just add to that to cover any overages, if there are any, and that would prevent us from having to, or the landfill really, to service any more debt for the expansion. So that's what this is all about.
Okay. Is there any questions?
Question, Mayor.
Sure.
Is that just the interest to this point, or is this...
That's just the interest to the end of February.
Okay, just to the end of February. So any interest we make after that would not be added?
Or I would suggest that any interest earned on those bonds be used for the project, or be designated for the project. So, but we're going to be... There won't be much more, Kyle, because they'll start construction next month, and then we'll start using that money. The landfill will start requesting draws on that money, so there won't be much more. Now, this is on those bonds, doesn't have anything to do with the bonds for the Justice Center. This is just for the landfill.
Right. And it's not including the bond that we're voting on tonight?
Correct. Correct.
And let me just say that it may not even be used. It's just there in case of...
Any other... Yes.
Thank you. Is the city doing any bonding?
Not on the additional financing. We're handling the $6.5 million by ourselves.
Okay.
And there's a couple of reasons of that. One is it'll be cheaper with one issue, as far as instead of two costs of issuance for two issues, it'll be one, plus because there will be larger denominations of bonds, so we'll get a better interest rate, a lower interest rate. So that'll save money in two ways, and that's... Those are the primary reasons.
Okay. Any further... Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Chairman. One question. Does that mean Hammond County citizens is the ones that's going to bear the blunt of that if it falls down, that we're responsible for every bit of it?
Our taxing authority is backing those bonds, yes. Now, what's going to pay those bonds off is an agreement between the landfill and the county that they will reimburse the county for the payments. And so the financial advisor, Cumberland Securities, in our analysis of the situation is the current tipping fee of $50 a ton will cover this debt, but that would also include refinancing the debt that we did in '23, and the city did in '22, to extend the length of those bonds so that it'll lower the payments. So there's a plan. One is we issue these bonds. The second is we refinance the bonds we issued last year. The city refinances theirs, extend their life, and we don't have to raise tipping fees. The landfill doesn't have to raise tipping fees.
One more question, Mr. Mayor. Is there any danger of this falling back and biting Hammond County citizens? Because we have a high enough tax right now. I'm just wondering if, is there any danger of it biting back as far as tax increase?
I can't give you 100% guarantee, but the plan that we are proposing, it'd be a very slim chance.
At the end of the day, it is for a landfill expansion that we must have.
Well, and the revenue that goes into the landfill, the city and county are the two largest customers of land, so the tipping fees that we pay out of our garbage fund go to the landfill, and some of those funds will be used to make these payments. The same thing, the city will be paying the landfill tipping fees for the waste that they bring to the landfill, and so those, some of those, it's $15 a ton, goes toward debt service, so the city will be paying on this as well.
Any further discussion on this item? Commissioner Green, were you finished?
Finished, thank you, sir.
Is there any other discussion on this item? So to reiterate here, we have an amendment to our regular calendar under Item C3, Use of Interest Income from Landfill Bond Proceeds to be added to our regular calendar under the Finance Committee. Let's take a vote, please. Roll call.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Edna Green?
No.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
This motion carries. Thank you very much. Commissioner Horner?
On 4B, the Approval of Regular Calendar Items, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
No.
We got to delete this finance before...
Yeah, we've got one other deletion there you need to work on. Another amendment.
The Delete from Finance Committee, Resolution 2411A, Resolution Authorizing the Hammond County Sheriff's Office to Apply for a Tennessee Highway Safety Office Sponsored Impaired Driving Enforcement Grant. We want to delete that.
Does everybody understand? Do you have that before you?
We can't hear.
Okay. The other item to amend in our regular calendar is Delete from the Finance Committee, Item 11D, Resolution 2411, a resolution authorizing the Hammond County Sheriff's Office to apply for a Tennessee Highway Safety Office Sponsored Impaired Driving Enforcement Grant. That is to remove that item. Do we have a motion? Tim has put that in a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Now, is there any discussion on this item? To my understanding, just for further explanation, the Sheriff's Department has decided that this grant will not service them to what they were needing. It was... Sheriff, would you like to speak to it momentarily?
It wouldn't be beneficial to us for the stuff that we could get. It would be like a small trailer that we could only use for roadblocks, so we decided to withdraw that grant and search another grant for some things that we need.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Chris Cutshaw?
Aye.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Bobby Hahn?
Aye.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Hudson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Rodney Long?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
And that motion does carry. Commissioner Horner, now let's vote the motion, please.
Item 4B, Approval of Regular Calendar Items, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on the approval of the regular counter items? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please. And that motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Move to Item 5. We do not have any items removed from the consent counter. Now, the approval of the consent counter. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Yes, it was, Commissioner Horner. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on our consent counter? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please. And this motion does carry. Thank you. Item 7, We Will Now Recede as a Hammond County Legislative Body and Open for a Public Hearing for Resolution 2406, to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 4, Tax Map 013, Parcel 033.00, Address of 8250 Grove Street, Whitesburg, Tennessee, 37891. Rezone from Residential 1 to Agriculture 1. Is there anyone that would like to speak concerning this item? Seeing none, hearing none, we will now close the public hearing and now reconvene as our Hammond County Legislative Body and take up Item 8, Rezoning Resolution. Resolution 2406, to amend the zoning map of Hammond County, Tennessee by rezoning District 4, Tax Map 013, Parcel 033.00, Address of 8250 Grove Street, Whitesburg, Tennessee, 37891, from R1 to A1. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
We do have a motion.
Second.
And we do have a second. Now, is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please. And this rezoning takes place. Item 9, Chairman Horner, you're recognized for the Justice Center and Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9A, the Change Order Number 18 for $150,088, and I'll put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
As I've already said before, I missed it on the last one, I will not vote for an additional change order till we get some explanations from the county of what has conspired and what would help Hammond County or not, so that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please. And this motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Horner. Item 10, Audit Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 10A, Acceptance of Hammond County Government Audit for Fiscal Year Ending June 30th, 2023, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Hit your button there, Joe.
(Inaudible).
And we have a second. Now, we have discussion... Yes, Commissioner Neesmith.
Have we got... Bobby, have we got anything on that, the two findings that we've got questions on?
That would be addressed to me at this point, but no, sir.
How can we vote on something we don't have the...
We... We're accepting those items will be in, and when they will be taken up as it comes. And you must be speaking of the finding with the EMA.
Yeah, EMA and Road Department.
Those... The Road Department findings are in. They're in.
What was the findings on it?
I haven't heard.
Well, it's in our report. It's in your book, right in front of you. The finding that was discussed in our...
Improper time sheets. That was improper time sheets was the finding for the Road Department.
It was approved?
No. They just said they were improper. That was the finding.
They're improper?
That was the finding.
So the Road Department is improper?
No, the Road Department is not, and it was under... It was the Sanitation Department, but there was a finding, and the auditor stood in front of us and said what he found, and it was not criminal, I say "he," what the audit found. It was not criminal, and Mr. Poole had taken ownership to what was taking place, and the plan of action will be forthcoming. It's not settled yet as far as what will happen with that, and this body will have everything to say about what happens as far as moving forward.
Okay, although we'll vote for it today to accept it, but we don't know what the findings are yet.
No, sir, we do know what the finding is.
Well, we don't know what his findings is. What his final is, you just said it.
We don't know the resolution, but we do know the finding.
You don't know his findings.
Okay. I think it's terminology problem, but yes, sir.
Yeah, it is.
I'll accept your thought. Any other question? Yes, Commissioner Green.
I'd like to go a little further with what he was saying. When will we get an update to the point as to what the corrective action for the Sanitation Department will be? I know we weren't allowed to ask and a lot of...
That's not true. That's not true. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Green. Go ahead, Ms. Green. Finish your statement, please.
Thank you for the privilege, sir. I'd like to know what corrective action will come into play, because if, and those folks work hard, don't get me wrong, they work hard, they have a hard job, I wouldn't want their job. But if you're not working what you're getting paid for, that's one thing. When I worked, I clocked in and out when I worked in a factory. And I don't know about the rest of you, but I have a problem with things just being written in and people leaving and getting paid for hours not worked. That's not our money, that's Hammond County citizens' money. And I'd like to hear what they plan to do, if they plan on leaving it that way.
Excuse me, ma'am, if I may interrupt and answer your question, because you're going down a path that we've already discussed, this body will have something to say about that. This body, when you know, we all know, and we'll be voting on that, you will know the plan of action that will be taking place. And no, I do not have an answer as to when, but we hope that will be taking place before budget.
Okay, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Ben, you brought it that way, sir.
Before budget?
Ben, that's an elected official that is in charge of that. Will we still have, for lack of a nicer word, will we have the authority to control it?
The best we can, we're going to put our policy in place where all bodies are in agreement. It may be a select committee of certain folks that get together and bring a recommendation to us. And like Finance Director, Human Resources, Commissioner, maybe, Mayor, Mr. Poole, Mr. Wiles Carver, something like that. And they'll bring a recommendation to this body that we can look at and give it a look over.
Do you anticipate some accountability for that, sir?
Well, ma'am, we can't, there's accountability in everything. If you'll recall, there was an audit finding, there was an audit finding, there is accountability in everything that happens each and every year. And as far as that goes, they have a plan, I think, that they're going to bring to us. So let's move on. Bobby Hahn.
I spoke with Barry Poole today, or excuse me, it was yesterday, at length, and accountability and acceptability. He has completely accepted the findings as being on his shoulders, not trying to shrug it off on anybody. We talked about possibilities, making changes that's going to appease the auditors, and he's looking into two or three different remedies on that. One of the things we talked about for the first time in, I don't know, since pre-COVID, we've got a full staff in the waste department. Our garbage is getting picked up, our bulk waste is getting picked up, our brush is getting picked up. And whenever we have a lack of employees, and those employees that are there, they get pulled off the brush and the bulk and put onto garbage. So your garbage is still getting picked up, but then you're having bulk or brush stacked in your yard for a month and a half, two months, and I don't know about y'all, but I get calls about that, when's the brush truck going to run? Well, for the last few months, we've been at full staff and everything has really run smooth. Now, I will say this, right, wrong, good, bad, or indifferent, when things are running smooth, I don't like to monkey with them. And we've got men that are doing a very dirty, very dangerous job, a job, Ms. Green, you said you wouldn't want to do, well, neither would I. And these men are hampered not so much by their job, but by the landfill. Their trucks are encouraged to turn around and be out of the landfill by 3:15. Well, that leaves them an hour and 15 minutes to get back to the shop with nothing to do. I asked Barry about cleaning the trucks, and he said to clean the trucks is about a four-hour job. So it's not something you can jump out there and wash the truck in 30 minutes and be ready to go. So these guys are very hampered by that. Then you throw in the low pay, which we're paying as much as we can right now, but just about every one of those guys leave their job and go to another job, whether it's mowing yards or moving furniture or whatever. We're asking a lot of them. I mean, good gracious, just look at the cold weather and the snow, and those guys are out there picking their garbage up. Do you ever think about what they put themselves through in order to service the people of this county? And it's getting done. Every week, my garbage is picked up. And we're at a point now where every time I set some brush or some bulk waste at the road, in two or three days, it's picked up. And that's what we wanted. And Barry's working on a plan to fix the problem so the auditors won't have any findings next year. He's not trying to get by with anything. He's trying to run his department, he's trying to take care of his people, and just like each one of us, we're trying to take care of the people of Hammond County and make sure that everything is taken care of. And I know you said you didn't like people getting paid for not working, you always clocked in and clocked out, and, you know, that's fine, you know? But the truth is, there's a solution to this that's going to benefit you and I as the citizens of this county. And right now, I don't think anybody's got to complain about the, any other waste pickup, the bulk pickup, the bulk waste pickup, the garbage pickup. To me, it's better than it has been in the last, at least the last five to seven years. So even though we got a finding right there, and that's not a good thing, it's not a criminal thing, and it's, and right now, I don't have anybody in my district complaining about the services. So I think we need to let Barry work on that, come to a solution, mirror it with what the auditors will accept, bring it to us, and then you'll have your say, as we all will.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner How, you're recognized.
Yes, sir, thank you. I was just noticing in our book, it says page 239, it's about five pages from the Finance Committee, but it says the corrective action that he plans is right there, that he mentions the fact that they are on a salary, get 24 checks, and that they started this with COVID, and like you said, Commissioner Hahn, that the garbage gets picked up, and, but if they're getting salaried, I also have to assume there's no overtime, depending on the weather or all. But anyway, it said anticipated completion date of corrective action, March 31, so I'm hoping he's addressed it.
Well, he's working on it.
Yeah, Commissioner How, in our committee meetings.
Yes, sir.
There was some other discussion in that, I'll just catch you up.
Thank you.
That most likely salary will not be the plan of action, therefore, that's why this body will end up taking up an initiative to handle this through policy or work on this. We don't know the answer yet, we're going to try to, as Commissioner Hahn suggested, there's an answer somewhere in the middle here.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Yes, yes. Is there any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second to accept our Hammond County Audit for Fiscal Year ending in June 30 of 2023. Let's vote this motion, please.
11 yeas two eight.
This motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Hahn. We will now move into item 11, Finance Committee Chairman Bobby Hahn, you're recognized, sir.
Thanks, sir. 11A is the authorization to apply for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration Grant for Recovery Court, Resolution 2407, and I make that motion.
We do have a motion, and we do have a second.
Bobby, how much is that grant for? You know, it could be for as much as $5,000, is that what I raised?
Five or six.
$400,000 annually for up to five years.
$400,000.
Annually for up to five years.
Any matching on it? No. Take it then.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
This motion carries.
Item 11B, authorization to apply for the BRAG grant, Resolution 2408, I make that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
And this motion carries.
Item 11C, additional financing for landfill expansion, number one, is Resolution 2409, a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of Hammond County, Tennessee, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6,500,000. I make that a motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
11 yeas two eight.
And that motion passes.
Item 11C2, Resolution 24-10, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $6,500,000, general obligation bonds of Hammond County, Tennessee, I make that a motion.
We have a motion. We do have a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
11 yeas two eight.
This motion carries.
We have removed, I'm sorry, let's move on to this, item 11C3, use of interest income from landfill bond proceeds, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, this is off the board, please. This is the one we added, 11C3.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Harville to add the use of interest income from the landfill bond proceeds. We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please, off the board.
Debbie Aher.
Yes.
Chris Kutchaw.
Aye.
Agnes Green.
No.
Stan Harville.
Yes.
Bobby Hahn.
Aye.
Tim Horner.
Yes.
Joe Huntsman.
Yes.
Peggy How.
Yes.
Rodney Long.
Yes.
Mike Reed.
Yes.
Mike Richardson.
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith.
No.
Kyle Walker.
Yes.
This motion carries, 11 to 2.
We have removed item 11D, move down to 11E1, under Budget Amendments, Fund 122, Drug Control Fund, VCIF grant, $568.97, I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
This motion carries.
Item 11E2, Fund 128, Drug Use Abatement Fund, $150,000, I make that motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
Motion carries.
Item 11E3, Fund 101, JLLC grant, $62,225.40, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
This motion carries.
11E4, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, VCIF grant, $69,133.63, and I make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's vote this motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
And this motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We'll now move to item 12, Public Services Committee Chairman Mike Richardson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 12A, surplus items for General Sessions Court, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion, we do have a second. Is there any discussion on these surplus items? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
13 yeas zero eight.
And that motion carries.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. That concludes our business for the evening. Item 13, we'll look at our next committee meetings in April, will be on April the 10th at 5:00 here in this courtroom. Our next commission meeting will be April the 20th at 5:00 p.m. here in this courtroom. Are all minds clear? We adjourn.